For tonight, we now move into old business. Old business number one, this is a possible motion to introduce a bond order authorizing the issuance of up to forty-eight million dollars in parks and recreation facilities, bonds subject to approval by the voters. Shawn Purvis, the Assistant Town Manager is presenting.
Yes, sir. Mayor, all of members of town council, what you have for you on the motion, this is step two of three regarding movement toward the referendum in November. The second step is to introduce the bond order and authorize the finance officer to file sworn statement of debt and statement of estimated interest. We have already filed the application to the LGC per your request at your last meeting. The third and final step will come in August, the public hearing. Your decision tonight moving forward with the order also would call for the public hearing to be established on August first. I stand by to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Before we open the floor for questions for Shawn, just as a reminder, this is a normal step, step two of three in the process. I don't expect us to have any questions because we, this is all contingent on the referendum November seventh. But I'll ask, are there any questions or is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to authorize the issuance and allow the staff to continue with this session, or this step in the process. Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
No.
Okay. It passes three-one. We now move to unfinished business. Unfinished business zero-one and zero-two, we're going to discuss these together. Just as a reminder, this is a continued item that was a public hearing June the twentieth. And Mike Clark is doing the presentation. Council, we will be considering the annexation and the rezoning vote tonight. Mr. Clark?
I'm gonna go through this very quickly, namely just highlighting the things that have been changed since the June twentieth meeting. In terms of the annex, well, once again, this is a three-part application. There's the annexation for a select number of properties, and then there's both twenty-thirty future land use, or twenty-thirty land use map amendment, as well as a rezoning. Once again, to orient you to the site, you have Hume Olive located here, Richardson Road located right there. This is the tract that is subject to the annexation. And then in terms of the twenty-thirty future, or the twenty-thirty land use amendment and rezoning request, the applicant is still requesting it to be rezoned to plan into development. Since the June twentieth meeting, the applicant has made not significant modifications, but still modifications, namely within section five of the PD document, table one would include three additional uses, medical or dentist, or dental clinic or office, medical or dental laboratory, and research facility. And once again, those would be going in this location right here as available uses.
Can you back to that for a second? Is that the, that's the area that has the...
Oh, sorry, and within this area.
Within that one. Okay.
Yep.
And that is section?
That is within section one.
Section one.
Labelled mixed uses.
They've added those two numbers, okay.
Those three uses.
Great.
The second modification was to section six of the development, namely changing the minimum lot size from five thousand square feet to six thousand square feet, with an average lot size from seven thousand five hundred to ten thousand square feet. That would be in this location here.
You said seventy-five hundred average to ten thousand?
That's correct.
And that includes wetlands and everything else? Okay, that's the minimum lot size.
That's correct.
Okay.
Which in effect would also reduce the number of residential units from one hundred to seventy-five that would fit within that area. Finally, the applicant has made a clarifying statement that section one, which is the section that has the additional uses, will have up to five thousand, or fifty thousand square feet of commercial, and may have up to twenty, or two-hundred-and-twenty thousand square feet of office space, and may have three-hundred-and-twenty residential units, or a combination thereof. The final numbers haven't been determined, but those are up to.
Two-hundred-and-twenty thousand square feet of office.
That is correct.
What's the minimum? And what section is this again?
This is section one. If there was a minimum that has not changed, however, let me take a look.
See, I don't know why we have maximums, but I can see how we probably would have minimums.
It does not appear that the applicant put a minimum within the plan unit development document.
So we could zero? Is that correct?
I'm sorry?
We could have zero.
That could be correct. Finally, the applicant, well, additionally, the applicant has indicated that a minimum of two townhome pads would be located within section two, and that could accommodate up, or at least eight townhomes. And section two is located in this location here. Finally, some information came last week regarding the conservation easement, and the Army Corps of Engineers has indicated that is not a preferable location. So the applicant is also proposing a condition that they'll work with town staff, Wake County Public School System, and other entities in order to determine an appropriate location for the continuation of Richardson Road, being that this location is unlikely. And Shannon Cox is here if there's any more questions regarding that component, because she's far more versed in that than I am.
I thought that was resolved. But it's not resolved.
That is correct. It is not resolved. One of the alternatives would have it, the no impact, would have it swinging down, would have it swinging down this way, and around and back over.
Right along the school property?
The final location hasn't been determined and...
Well, if it went that way, that would be right along the school property.
It would, well, it could potentially clip through the school property.
Is, is the transportation plan still call for a crossing at some point across here? In other words, it's not gonna just disappear?
The corridor has not been amended on the transportation planes at this point, so we are still working through that process.
Okay.
To find an appropriate location.
Okay. But, but we want one from a planning perspective. We want one somewhere along that creek, right? Yeah, okay. All right.
That was all the modifications that the applicant has made since the last meeting, and with the exception of having the approval being contingent upon, the applicant working with the town in regard, or the town as well as Wake County Public Schools in terms of the relocation of Richardson Road, the staff position does not change.
Any other questions for Mike?
Section one is the one where we're talking about the two-hundred-and-twenty thousand square feet of office maximum.
Potentially, that's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, I understand that's moved up to phase two.
That is, the applicant has indicated that.
But there's no minimum. There's no minimum. So what can we have? All houses? Is that right?
Potentially.
That doesn't lock anything in. I mean, why call it out?
Well, there is one component for apartments, minimum fifty percent of the apartments would be on the second floor.
Fifty percent of the apartments would be on the second floor, meaning the first floor would be retail.
Or office, or some other use.
Couldn't imagine office on the first floor.
Isn't that the section that we're rezoning to non-residential? And that, there's a part of this that we're rezoning to non-residential, where's that at?
Well, to mix, uh, amending the future land use map?
Right.
This is a portion of that would be. Currently, this is the future land use map. It shows this area as mixed, medium density, and commercial services. The applicant is proposing to have office, office employment, high density residential, as well as commercial services in that location, as well as extending along the boundary of the school.
So we would be protected in section one at the, at least thirty percent minimum, correct?
Correct.
Well, it's not in section one, it's in the entirety of the outlined area.
I don't, I don't know where that map is. I keep looking for it, can't seem to...
Yeah, I'm looking for it also. What page is the map on of the, oh, here we're going into it, I guess.
It's about page one-nineteen. And unfinished number two, unfinished business O-T.
So, yeah, that kinda shows it, but they're, they're wanting to rezone outside of the section one, right, into the other area, is that what that's showing?
Modify the future, or the twenty-thirty future land use map, that's correct, which would be over in this area as well, which I believe is...
But in their section one, we'd be protected at the thirty percent, correct?
Within the boundaries of this blue line right here, which includes section three as well, I believe, that's the number.
And section three is the section that has the large lot subdivision where the people haven't really sold into this deal.
Portion of that is correct.
But they're agreeing to rezonate, right?
They're willing to rezonate, but then...
Which essentially says that...
They're locked in.
At some point we're...
At some point, if they ever die.
Yeah.
You know? I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't mean much of anything. Hopefully, they sell before they die. I don't know. I, I, I just think that the way it's, well, we're not, the way it's set up is we're not, nothing's locked in for non-residential. Very little.
Can, Mike, can you make clear for, for the area that's along both Hume Olive Road and the Richardson Extension, those parcels, what's the, what's the smallest amount of non-residential use that the, that this plan guarantees? Just to be clear for everyone.
That, I don't know if I have that calculation handy, I apologize. Within the, within the boundaries of this blue line, at least thirty percent would have to be non-residential.
Okay.
Boundaries of that blue line?
Within this blue line here.
Okay.
And so that's south of Hume Olive?
Thirty percent, oh, I'm sorry.
And along the Richardson Extension? With the Richardson Extension bisecting it?
Correct. This gray dotted line is the current configuration of the Richardson Road extension.
So there is thirty percent of that minimum?
That's by acreage.
Yep, by acreage. Right.
But it's not thirty percent of the whole development?
No.
By any means?
So, the areas in section one and section three are the ones that are shown as the mixed-use area subject to the thirty percent, and it's the acreage of those two. And so, section three on here says twenty-one acres. Section one, I can't read the acreage, has the word mixed-use over it.
So we're gonna be in the neighborhood of thirteen to fifteen acres-ish of non-residential?
Minimum.
Minimum.
Um, well, it's, yeah, I don't know what the section one is to do that math.
It's thirty-five point six acres. And, yeah, it's just those two.
And thirty percent of that is like twelve.
So that's about fifteen, sixteen acres minimum, right?
Well, it's over fifty thousand, so yeah, it's gonna be over fifteen acres.
Yeah.
And it does say on this map that the, um, the, I mean, the commercial section is all commercial. They can't put anything out there. So section three, whatever square footage they put there is guaranteed. You know, they're going to develop it as much as they can, and they're allowed up to a hundred-and-seventy thousand square foot.
In section three?
In section three, that's guaranteed. And then the limitation in section one is on the, on the apartments. Fifty percent of the apartments cannot be on the ground floor, so depending on how many apartments they build, in terms building-wise, you're gonna have either retail or office on the first floor.
Is there a height restriction out there?
Yes. Within section one, maximum building height is fifty-four feet, and in section three, it's forty-two feet.
So is it ten feet per story, right?
Well, it's, they list as maximum stories of four feet within section one, and three stories within section three.
I personally like this project still. I think it got even better with the increased lot size in the back. That's something I've really worked with them about. The non-residential portion of the residential development is something that they are the only ones that have brought to the table of all the residential developments, you know? That's gonna be a major intersection there, Hume Olive and Richardson Road. I think we'll see that come online.
Well, I'll tell ya, I like, I like the, the concept, except I don't like the timing. The timing just is not there in section three. It doesn't exist. It can't exist, because they don't own the property. We can lock that property into non-residential whenever it goes, but that could be twenty years from now.
Yeah, but you and I know from economic development, all the stuff we see is what, what property do you have rezoned? If it's not even rezoned, then they're packing and moving on. That handles one of the most difficult steps for these people, for non-residential developers.
And I agree that if you don't have it rezoned, I totally agree with you, absolutely correct, but if you have it, but it takes two to tango, and if it's rezoned for something and a developer comes by and says, "I really like that," and the homeowner says, "Well, I really like living here," you've got nothing. And that's my concern. It's, it's...
Because the parcel's, because the parcel's not owned by the development yet.
Yeah.
I agree, but to me, I mean, I'm no developer, but I kinda see a high demand for that parcel three, to, once they start pulling, building up.
I've heard that, I've heard that, I haven't seen it happen yet. But it's the same as with Sears, and, another one.
Well, I, I think where it is out there with those schools, you're going, gonna have to have some retail and offices, and obviously, I, if I owned land out there, I would be more than happy to sell it to Bojangles, cause then we put something in out there, because you know that's where they wanna be.
But you're a civic-minded person. Those people might wanna just stay there.
We heard from a bunch of them tonight.
I also like to, that's like being a wise investment person too, and I have landed, I've always said this when they build Friendship High School out there, if I own it, and you better believe, I'd be calling Bojangles tomorrow, and, uh, you mean...
That's high cholesterol, you know that, don't you?
Yeah, I know, I don't beat it, I, you know, Char Briel, what is it, Cookout? I hear it all the time. You know, that's, that's why I think it's, I kind of relate to this area over here at Apex, on Laura Duncan, I'm surprised that that is not filled out more because of the high school. I, I do like this plan because it is mixed use, and you have a lot of different types of homes out there. You know, I did a little homework, I know you're surprised, but I did a little homework about how many people come into Apex every day to work, because we always talk about people leaving. It's actually about fourteen thousand people that actually come into Apex to work. And I know we have a large percentage that go out, but those fourteen thousand people, is it because they can't afford to live here? Is it they don't wanna live here? What is it? But, um, I, when I taught school, I knew a lot of teachers that could not afford to live in Apex. And what this project community is doing is giving those teachers out there a place to live. I, I did a little more math, I know, I told you, I'm a math person, I used the calculator, I did some, figured out. I looked up how many teachers or staff members are at all these schools in Apex, and my number came up to be about eleven thousand people are employed in the schools that are Apex proper. I'm not talking about Middle Creek or Westlake, I'm talking about the most in Apex. And that doesn't include Friendship Middle or Friendship Elementary, they're gonna be all.
Oh, wow.
So, that's a lot of people that, eleven, just say eleven thousand, eleven hundred people.
Eleven hundred?
Eleven hundred, eleven hundred, eleven hundred, eleven, you know, I said, well, I guess, fourteen thousand.
I was about to say, how many students do we have?
There's a lot, there's a lot of students out there, I'm not gonna lie to you. But it's fourteen thousand people travel into Apex, I told you with math, eleven hundred people work at these schools, and that, like I said before, that doesn't include your new schools out there, Friendship, or your private schools or charter schools that are in Apex City. And I think we all know that starting teachers make less than forty thousand dollars, and they need somewhere to live. Not just your, your teachers, it's your retail people that need somewhere to live too. And yet, you know, sometimes they have to have a roommate. My daughter has had a roommate. And people have to have roommates to be able to get by, but at least there's a place that they can live and work, and then hopefully with this out there, because of the people that are gonna be there, the schools, that will cause more economic development in that area for your shops, restaurants, cleaners, whatever people use, your services.
I mean, all those people out there now have to drive a couple miles for all that, you know? This will bring a lot of potential.
And, you know, fortunately, I am no longer teaching, and even more fortunately, I no longer have kids that are in high school driving, but I tell you, if my kids were out there at Friendship High School, I'd be very concerned about them driving into Apex to try to get back to school by lunchtime. And Richardson Road, I'll say it again, when I see a connection there, you, oh, no, we need that, and we need, it's great that they're putting out the infrastructure, I mean, Habitat for Humanity, I mean, let's not forget that. Again, you're making affordable housing for people. And, you know, people go, what kind of people live in, and Habitat for Humanity, and the ones that are built are wide open, some teacher assistants live in this. So, you know, they're good people, they are paying for their homes, and it also brings some diversity into our community. And I, I'm all about Habitat and what they do, and I would think that this would be a great development for the needs of the people in Western Apex.
Is there a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve.
Can we clarify what?
Oh, yes, sorry, sorry, sorry. Yes, so, so I'd like to ask for a motion for annexation and the rezoning of this in one atomic vote. We're gonna try to do this with one vote.
And, and associated land use?
And the associated land use map amendments.
So, so moved.
So seconded.
Okay. All right, now we have that cleared, thanks.
Well, I will say, you know, I, I agree with everything you've said, Councilman Wilkie, in terms of teachers and Habitat and that sort of stuff. The big problem I still have with this is there may be thirty percent non-residential in one little area, and we're looking for jobs. Section three is a fairy tale. That is a fairy tale. And that bothers me to bits, frankly. I mean, I like the concept to, if, if it was a real concept, but I just don't see it as a real concept, the way it's being presented to us, so...
Well, I guess I'm already seeing jobs out there with Friendship High School, seeing jobs out there that are gonna be created with Friendship in the area, Friendship Middle. And so, those people are going to, you know, I'll just say it, moms dropping their kids off at school, they're gonna stop and get coffee somewhere. I mean, look at Salem, oh, where Salem is, hell no.
And I, and I think that's nice to have retail or services and things like that, and they'll stop off and get their coffee from one of the people that come into Apex, probably to work. It's not, it's still not, we're still not getting the type of jobs that could be actually allow people to live here, and, and it's, and the opportunity that might happen in twenty years, when section three sells, or whenever it does, is fine. I'm, I'm delighted to see that, but, you know, why not set aside for offices more of something that is actually under contract in this? It, I, I just, I, I see all the houses coming in, and I really think that it's, it's really good that we can have some higher density, lower income housing. I think that's critical for that area, it's really critical for some of Apex, other parts of Apex, but, but, but we're, we're given the numbers that, maximums but no minimums. That scares me. That says that it's wide open one direction, other than thirty percent of the residents have, residential units have to be over, over office. And, you know, it depends on how you do your residential units. That, that can go three stories in that area. You can stack a bunch of residents over just a small square footage of retail, and then have townhomes or something else elsewhere, so...
Is there a maximum of residential units in this place?
There is, at least, I don't know what the moving target is now, it was like eight-hundred-and-sixty total before, but I, I think it's come down.
Do we have a new maximum residential units?
Yes. The maximum right now is eight-hundred-and-thirty-five.
Eight-hundred-and-thirty-five.
And that's for the overall development?
Is there a minimum?
One?
No.
Kidding, kidding, sorry.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the table.
Yeah, I just also make a couple comments. I had concerns last time, primarily with density, it didn't need a developer, but, but certain last times, particularly with section seven, and I understand why they're going, they're leaving the way it is, as it was last time, but they agreed to lower the density in section six on the left side. So overall, the, the density's going down, so it's like, I do share your concerns a bit, but I guess my feeling is section three's gonna go pretty fast, once the stick starts going, so, um, even if it didn't, it's not enough to make me turn it down, so...
I understand. I mean, I, I like much of it, I just...
Yeah, I didn't know about that for a minute.
Pardon?
I didn't know about the Habitat for Humanity, that's nice.
And I, I think it's wonderful, Habitat for Humanity does a lot of good things, and I, if I felt good about real office space, and if there was an actual minimum there, I'd vote for this in a heartbeat. But I just think, I, I feel like I'm a horse being led to a mirage. There isn't no water there, so... Well, let's call a vote, because I know it's gonna go three to one, so let's get it done.
Okay. Anyone object to calling for the vote? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no?
No.
All right, that passes three-one. And to be clear, that was the annexation and the rezoning.
And the land use map.
And the land use, the land use map amendment. All right, that takes us now to new business number one. This is the possible motion to approve the West Village Master Subdivision Plan. Mike Clark is presenting, and if you wanna take a couple of seconds to let the crowd head towards the door, that'd be fine.
Not good. Still have, still have a hundred acres, which I'll never work with. We've had other areas out here, so, this is, this is a mirage.
This, this is, this is a mirage. This is a mirage. It's what it, oh, absolutely.
All right, you got the floor.
This is a master subdivision request for the West Village development. To orient you to the site, um, the total development, um, as approved for the plan unit development was, uh, or is a hundred and sixty-three point three four acres. Um, it does go on both sides of Kelly Road, uh, NC five forty, also known as the toll roads there, and old US one located here. Uh, future Pleasant Plains Park is located there. The app, or the property is currently zoned plan unit development conditional zoning. It was approved as part of, uh, application fifteen CZ thirty-three. And the twenty thirty land use map does include a portion of the property, um, being medium density residential, while the remainder of the property, um, would be mixed use, uh, office employment, high density residential and commercial services. The applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting on this project on November seventeenth, twenty sixteen. A copy of that report was included in your application packets. And the applicant is proposing to construct a total of, um, eighty-six single family residential units and two hundred and ninety-four townhome units. Currently, the site is a combination of single family homes, uh, open areas, forest land, as well as several streams that meander through the property. Uh, the applicant has broken this into, um, the residential component of this into three sections. There's a townhome section up near old US one, uh, this map is rotated, north is this way. Um, uh, townhome section located here, adjacent to NC five forty and Kelly Road. And then a single family residential section located here, uh, which would be, did my orientation correctly, west of Kelly Road. In total, the applicant is providing, uh, is required to provide twenty-seven percent RCA, um, being that the site will be masqueraded. Uh, within the residential component, um, the applicant would end up having forty-one point four eight percent of RCA. The applicant is also meeting the requirements of seven, or section seven point three point one of the U D O in terms of private playlons, which would be located here, here, here. There's a portion here and then they, one amenity center there and then an amenity center here. Uh, the smallest of the playlons is point four three acres, the largest is point six one. Um, there would be extensive, uh, public utility connections, um, through offsite improvements, including sewer easements that would come off of the property here and then water would have to be extended down Kelly Road and over to US one. Um, in terms of design guidelines, the, uh, minimum lot size for the single family residential component located here is seven thousand, uh, with, or, is, you know, minimum is seven thousand with an average of eight thousand. And as you've heard previously, a minimum of ten thousand square feet for lots within one hundred feet of the neighboring development. Um, as shown, the applicant does meet that. Townhomes, uh, the minimum lot width is twenty-two feet. Um, and in both situations, the applicant was able to meet it. The applicant has also, uh, agreed to all the residential conditions that were part of the, um, plan unit development request. This is, uh, a bit closer of a detail of the northern section, which has single family residential on the west side of Kelly Road. And then townhomes between NC five forty and Kelly Road. With, uh, full movement access here, it would connect in, this is future commercial in this location, as well as over in this location. And then the south section, which would have a drive that would line up with Pleasant Plains of Road, continue up and then have a secondary access, uh, to US one through the future commercial section.
Wasn't there a roundabout there at one point?
There is, it, in order to fit it on the screen, we're unable to show it. Um, eventually, there will be a second roundabout which would connect up to Kelly Road as well, through the commercial phase. I'll go through these, uh, save time. In terms of landscaping and buffers, along Kelly Road, there would be a thirty foot type A. Along NC five forty, a one hundred foot type A. And adjacent to West Winds, it is a forty foot buffer, uh, thirty of it would be an on disturb buffer as well as a ten foot type A. And then along old US one, it would be, um, a thirty foot type E. And then adjacent to other residential, um, it would be a ten foot type A.
Along, along, hi, old highway one is thirty foot type E?
Correct.
Even where there's houses?
That is correct.
So, the back of those townhouses, right there, is that thirty foot E?
On the sides of them, yes, that's correct.
On the sides of it?
This was, this was put together before we changed the U D O.
That is correct.
So, it's grandfathered in?
Yeah, the fronts of the townhouses would face the cul-de-sac in this location.
You didn't talk to the developer about possibly upgrading that, did you? I mean, it's voluntary for them at this point.
I inquired about it, uh, as part of the rezoning, but I do not remember what their response was. I believe it was something with the commercial component as well.
Well, the commercial component does need the visibility, but the townhomes sure don't.
Um, the applicant has also provided, uh, architectural examples of what the townhomes as well as the single family residential structures would look like. And the planning board held, um, a meeting on July tenth and unanimously recommended approval. Um, staff can also recommend approval contingent upon, uh, the applicant being able to still meet section eight point one point six subsection B of the U D O. There's still some trees that would need to be protected within the required buffers. Um, the applicant has indicated that they will be able to accomplish that. Does anybody have any questions?
Um. There's, there's a full, uh, access intersection across from Pleasant Park.
That is correct.
And the other is limited access, right in, right out.
That is correct.
Could that ever be changed to full access, I guess?
I'm going to defer that to us all.
I figured that, Mike, I, I saw him jumping up and down.
Um, now's okay, if Mike's okay with it.
I'm good with it.
All right.
For the residential phase, it'll be right in, right out in the interim. Uh, the only reason they're required to do that, uh, at this time is because when they go over fifty units, they have to have a second point of access. The, um, ultimate plan in the zoning for the commercial phase is to convert that to full movement. And then where Kelly Road is now, that would go to right in, right out because of the close proximity to, to five forty. Um, that is subject to D O T, uh, review and approval, so, you know, that could change. If D O T says they want to keep Kelly Road open as full movement, um, that's fine, we'll go with that in the future. It may require some additional improvements at that time, but we'll, we'll have those discussions, um, when we approach them about converting it.
While you're there, I have one more question if I may, and that is, uh, it was mentioned about line of sight on Kelly Road for, um, entrance to the development and buses. Would that be changed to, uh, grade down that hill or is that in the cards at all?
Uh, we'll, we'll certainly look at that location, I may add something, something good to point out. Um, we have had issues with developments in the past where they've had to make adjustments or they've had to change the grade in the road, um, in more extreme cases to satisfy site distance concerns. That's one of the things D O T asks for, um, when there are problems with site distance, so.
Yeah, and that's a D O T road, so they would have to be the one.
It is, and we'll look at it as part of the plan process. I mean, typically, that's not something you see until construction plan, but now if the applicant's heard that concern, um, hopefully they'll go ahead and look at that now with us at site plan. Um, and, you know, it's certainly good to know about that sooner rather than later in case some adjustments can be made at this time.
And you're satisfied with what, there, uh, it's a three lane road, I think, uh, on those, on the entrance way, like, uh, Olive Chapel, is that correct?
Um, I, I have.
I don't know which one, that one there, is that three lane?
We have a zoom in of that road they're showing to show exactly what it looks like.
Yeah, go back.
If we can zoom in a little bit better to show that.
Keep going back, there we go.
So, not have so many grading lines.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's, yeah, as it comes in off Pleasant Plains, it's actually, um, I mean, you've got, you've got a median entrance island, you've got two lanes exiting, one lane coming in. It goes down to a two lane collector type roadway with, um, par, with parallel parking on street. So, that helps to separate that parking from the travelway, um, in order to make that road a, you know, a higher level facility, um, be able to carry more volume and you don't have driveways fronting it. So, it operates like a collector street with additional parking.
Is that a minor thoroughfare?
I don't think we classified Shannon as a minor thoroughfare in this case. I think we, if it's just a special collector street cross section is the way we labeled it.
I never noticed before, but it seems like kind of odd to, but, to me, a lot of cars go through there. And, um, you know, it's only just one of Kelly, and they have parallel parking on there, seems a little disruptive to me.
There is some balance there, I mean, one of the things that parallel parking helps to do is, of course, satisfy, you know, parking, um, concerns that we get in urban style developments, you know, gives a lot of extra guest parking. It also helps to, um, calm traffic somewhat without actually interfering with the travelway. So, people are driving through there, they see the on-street parking, um, but they're not impeded by it in terms of it encroaching on the travelway and causing a problem for two cars to pass each other. So, the higher volumes can move through, but they also have the effect, the visual effect of the on-street parking.
Well, these, these, and these will be formal marked, parallel parking.
They will.
And obviously, the site triangle will be well preserved. I'm, I'm thinking in, uh, in line with what Ms. Killingsworth was mentioning earlier about the Amber Gate Station and Windy Road. Um, just as a parallel kind of concept, how do we see this scenario playing outward? This is a road with parallel parking and obviously residential on both sides. Will there be pedestrians wanting to cross and finding it tricky or will that be taken into account as well?
Well, the, right there at the intersections, it does, of course, neck down, your parallel spaces have some offset. Um, there are, there are two ways we can look at site distance. One of those is our standard site triangles, which are measured off the right of way. But those don't do a great job in terms of projecting site distance across parking spaces because if you project that site distance, you're going to be behind parked cars. Um, the other way they can look at it is with the, um, standard roadway design, site triangles projected from a driver's line of sight. Um, where you measure that is fifteen feet back from the travelway and it's projected out and the distance is based on the, the, um, anticipated speed of the roadway. Um, so we can certainly check those lines of sight and see if parking interferes. Uh, one thing we can do is we can cut down, um, on some of the parking spaces that are close to the intersections. Um, we did some of that out here on Hunter Street when these par, we spaces were put in. Um, we cut back some spaces to give a little more site distance.
Okay.
We'll, we'll consider that as part of the review.
Yeah, I, I know, I want to make sure we're doing what we can do to prevent, um, forcing people to park their car on the stop stripe so that they can see safely. And right now, I know there are a few places where the stop stripe, if you actually stop behind it, you can't adequately see and it may be because of a parked car or maybe because of landscaping or other things, but, you know, the, obviously, the, the, the stop stripe has a reason for how far it is back.
Yeah, the stop stripes are typically set based on an offset from a crosswalk, in some cases, they may be without a crosswalk. They don't necessarily, um, dictate where you're supposed to stop to be able to see stop traffic. The proper way to proceed through an intersection is to come to a complete stop behind the stop bar. And then if you can't see, roll forward slowly until you can see. Um, that's where ash-toe site distance comes into effect, where it's fifteen feet offset from the travelway. In a lot of cases, you'll have stop bars set back much further than that offset. Um, and we do get complaints sometimes from drivers that they stop at the stop bar and they can't see. Um, but there's a lot of locations like that and quite frankly, when you try to clear site distance too much, um, you know, to account for drivers stopped too far back from the intersection and still able to see, we get more stop sign running because drivers have a longer perspective. As you're approaching the intersection, they can see way far afield and they just kind of roll through without coming to a full stop. So, there's a balance there.
Sure.
Between the two.
Yeah.
We, and we heard, okay, I'm sorry, you.
No.
We, we, we just heard earlier about villages of Apex having a line of sight problems with cars parking close, so.
Those aren't designated spots though, are they?
Right, they're not designated spots, they're, they're simply.
Parking up close.
And we've, we've been out there and I think the police have issued some citations in those cases. For the most part, we haven't noticed significant problems out there, at least in our opinion, in terms of site distance. But if you get out there in some cases with a measuring tape and you measure exactly for ordinances, you might see a violation. Um, but, but again, in most cases, we haven't seen, um, quite the problems that we've heard. Um, part of that again is the difference between an expectation for a more suburban style cul-de-sac, closed off neighborhood versus a more urban type development. And when you get more urban type, um, developments, like in downtown areas, for instance, you don't always have the same line of sight. Um, you're going to have parking, you're going to have a lot more pedestrians, you're going to have more things to deal with and that's, that's something we deal with too, is expectations in different types of developments when people move in.
Any other questions for Russell or Mike? Or Shannon?
Mike, did you ever get a response on that thirty foot type E buffer? You said you weren't really sure on that, on the long old US one there that.
I did not, but the applicant is present if you'd like to ask him directly.
By the townhomes?
Yes.
Yeah.
What was the question?
The thirty foot type E buffer, um.
Change it.
Oh, you mean, uh, see if there will be a
See if they're willing to make.
A voluntary change?
Just makes the neighborhood better.
Is the applicant here to speak on that? Where's, where's the applicant? This is, this is requesting additional landscaping, basically on the side of those townhouses, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. Hi, could you state your name for us?
I'm Josh Decker with McAdams Company.
Okay.
Uh, questions related to a change in buffer type?
Yeah, the thirty foot type E along the townhouses on old US one right there by Pleasant Plains.
Yes. Um, they're fine with that change.
So, what, be specific, what's, what's the type A?
Yes, it's a thirty foot type A, I don't know the specifics off the top of my head, but it would be an increase in planting.
Yeah, that's new to our U D O and we're having everybody do it, basically.
Mike, is that, you got that? Okay. All right.
Can I just make sure, you're just talking about the, oh, gosh, which, I can't tell what direction.
Yeah, on the town.
The west side of Pleasant Plains.
Yeah, the southern si, the southern end.
The townhomes only, right?
Yeah, townhomes only.
That's right.
The residential portion.
Right, not across the non-residential piece.
Right.
No, we want a ten foot wall there.
Okay. Thank you for
Yeah, thank you, but.
representing the applicant there.
Yeah.
So, I heard that as a condition, I saw some people writing that down, so we're good, okay. Any, any other? Anything else, counsel?
I guess I'd just like to make a couple of comments.
Okay, you got the floor?
That's okay, um, Mr. Swan, thanks for all your effort in putting that together, um, you know, I encourage you. I think staff has already taken notice of some of the things you talked about, uh, keep working with them and, and the developer and, um, you know, I think we are willing to look at all those traffic concerns and issues. Um, you know, one thing, uh, through this process too, the, the, uh, they're providing you guys, I think, seventy-five thousand dollars in a trust fund to help with the water for your neighborhood that's unheard of, first time I've ever heard of that. And I verified that with the, uh, senior ranking council member here.
You're very kind.
Yeah. I did talk to some neighbors too out there, they're on Will and Sethic and this is going to bring water to them. They're very thrilled about it, they live just, kind of just down Kelly Road a little way, so they're, they're super excited about the, the, uh, not having to drink out of bottled water and take showers out of bottled water anymore, so. Um, it's going to do a lot of good out there for that area. I'm excited about the non-residential piece, um, I think, uh, Mr. Sears is, um, from sitting with him for a couple hours, he's, he's ready to go. He's just waiting for the right opportunity, he's going ahead and taking that step in rezoning the land and making it easy for an end user, so.
If you sat with me, I'd be ready to go too.
Give him a hug later? Um, I appreciate that, a, a, anything else you want to make or do you want to just carry that into a motion, it sounds like?
Oh, yeah, I do.
Do you want to, do you want to follow?
I want to make a comment, I, I was waiting until the motion was made though.
Go ahead, I'll make a motion to approve this.
All right, is there a second?
I'll, I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve with the condition, with the condition, okay, do you want?
The only comments I made, I've been opposed to this project from the beginning, but I just think the traffic does not work well, especially with Kelly Road and with the Pleasant Park opening up, it's just going to be one big headache down there, so, uh, I'm going to vote no, but, well, because of the traffic issues.
Well, I, you know, I understand and I've, I've looked at this on the traffic situation. Well, I, you know, I understand, and I've, I've looked at this on the traffic situation. It, I think there could be problems, but I'm going to rely on our staff on that aspect. And it, the way it comes through, and the way it eventually comes through, it will get dispersed to a degree throughout this development with the two roads going on to Highway 1, I have mixed emotions on all of these things, but I, I, I think there's an opportunity for a reasonable amount of non-residential there. If I was sitting here on a situation where it was rezoning like we had before, I'd start, I would have pushed back a lot harder with respect to Mr. Sears and tried to get some sort of a timeline once again. We don't have a timeline with Mr. Sears, but I understand Wes has broken his arm now, and, and he may, he may move. Kind of sad, in a way, to see that happen. It's old Apex kind of disappearing a little bit each time. It's what I know I came here for, was the ambiance of, of the Olives, the Olive Road, and, and all of that, but it's gradually becoming urban. But I came here because there was a house that I could buy, and I recognize that.
You wanted out of California, didn't you?
Well, I wanted out of Los Angeles, the armpit of California.
Just being there, I prefer that.
Yeah, yeah. It's, well, that was a place that, as a child, quite frankly, it was a very nice place to live. We lived on a half an acre, which became a huge number of apartments, and, and that's really the reason why I ended up trying to run for council, is because I saw what a disaster that had become. It was, I was delighted as we flew over LA, leaving, saying goodbye. But it was a wonderful place to grow up in, I will say that. But just, they poured way too many people into it, just way, way too many.
All right, we have a, a motion and a second to approve with the condition of the Type A buffer along the townhouses on the south side of the property and along South Salem Street.
And I'll say, oh, my, kind of what, echo what Mr. Moeller said, too. I really appreciate Swan's and all they've done, and I think, I feel like strong, I feel strongly that our staff listens to them, and hopefully, we'll do some things, and as this progresses, we'll do the right things to foster out. I'm happy with the buffer. I'm also pleased that people are going to get water out there. You said that before, but I do hope that as this continues to, being that we will do, staff will pay attention to this and make the road improvements that are necessary, and make it a great place, and that the neighbors, it's the McAdams, the people that who's, that were not the McAdams, that they will be good neighbors to this neighborhood, and treat them with respect and dignity as they are moving in on their, here, I do appreciate that.
All right, any objection if I call for the vote? Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
All right. That passes 3-1.
Thank you, Mr. Moeller, for the buffer award.
And we now move to new business number two. This is a possible motion to adopt an ordinance to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages beginning at 10:00 AM in accordance with session law 2017-87 from the state of North Carolina. Presenting is Town Manager Drew Havens. I'll pause for a second while some folks leave. All right, Mr. Havens, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, you introduced it very well. Before you are two versions of the ordinance amendment. One, version A, would allow the sale of alcoholic beverages to any licensed establishment beginning at 10:00 AM on Sunday morning. The version B, the difference is it restricts it just to locations that serve the session law, or the Senate bill did relax North Carolina standards to come in line with 47 other states allowing the sale of alcohol beginning at 10:00 in the morning. Prior to that, a lot of law said, you got those two versions in front?
All right, thank you. And just before we begin the discussion, we, we talked a little bit about how to present this, and I thought the best thing to do would be give council a couple of options. As many know, this was presented as a brunch bill, so one of the options I thought made sense was to say, if you're out for brunch and you're buying food, and you want to buy something to go with it, if it's after 10:00 AM, that's, you know, sticking with the spirit of the name brunch bill. The other, which is what other municipalities have done, is just open it up to all sales of alcohol at 10:00 AM. That would include taprooms, bars, grocery stores. So you have the two options in front of you. Open up for conversation with the council members at this time.
First, I'm a favorite option A to let anybody know about this restaurant itself, starting at 10:00 PM on Sunday mornings. It lines well with the state law, and it kind of doesn't play favors, so...
Okay.
I'm fine with option A as well. I think that, I mean, I, I can't see places opening up that early, honestly. I mean, I, I think it would be bad business if they did not open up that early. Everybody's in church usually till 12-ish or something, but I'm fine with...
Option A in line for every, for everybody, every, every establishment.
I was telling to you, I was lobbying by the think-take of Apex, the 80-year-olds and above from Baptist churches that were a little concerned about this, but then one of the groups said that if they don't get it here, they'll get it somewhere else, and so, in the name of economic impact and business in Apex, I'll go along with option A.
It sounds like we have a consensus. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve option A. Any further discussion?
No, I, I, well, one question I have is, can, I thought it was for services as a drink.
Would you like to clarify?
This allows for the sale of alcoholic beverages from any licensed establishment at 10:00 AM.
Period. And it doesn't matter whether it's...
Beer, liquor, wine.
Poor, poor, or comes in a bottle.
Whatever their license allows them to do, they just have, rather than being able to start a new, they'd be able to start a capital.
Yeah. And personally, I, I think, I think it's fine. It's good that they moved it back to 10 o'clock, and it's basically a religious, religious law, because we're talking about churches, but we have a mixed community. We have Jewish people here who go to the synagogue on Saturday, I believe, and Muslims who go to their place of worship on Friday. So it is a specialized law that we're dealing with, and relaxing it, I think, is the right thing to do. Are we able to call for a vote?
Yeah, if nobody else has any discussion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, the motion passes for option A approval. We now have completed all of the agenda items save the one closed-session item. This is a possible motion to go into closed session to discuss matters for location or expansion of industries or businesses in the town of Apex.
I'll make a motion, going closed session.
Excuse me, can I clarify that? We actually have an additional...
Is there additional cause, reason?
Yes, to consult with the town attorney.
And to consult with town attorney. All right, you accept the friendly amendment there on that motion? Is there a second?
No.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All right, before I call for the vote, I'll just remind the, the public that there is no further items on our agenda. We will be in closed session. When we come back out, we will reconvene for the purpose of adjourning. But we will be back out here, in case you want to wait. With all that said, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of going to closed session indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, we're now going into closed session.